Good evening, everyone. Okay. Roll call, please. Eva?
Trustee Weekly.
Trustee Weekly?
Present.
Trustee McAvoy?
Present.
Trustee Wells?
Here.
Vice President Lawson?
Here.
President Marcus?
Here. Happy New Year and welcome everyone to another Redwood City School Board Meeting. For those that need Spanish interpretation, si necesita, si requiere interpretación al español, por favor llame al 978-990-5137 y presione 8377041 y el signo de números para la contraseña. If you're speaking to the board, we encourage you to, I'm sorry, because I'm like jumping ahead of my game. The public is encouraged to speak to the board on issues or concerns, whether or not issues are on the agenda or not. To address the board, please complete the speaker's card. If you are in person and if you are virtual, please submit the Google Doc. And do we have any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay.
We could move 9.1 to consent if we, if that's okay. That's just a measure you addendum.
Any other changes to the agenda? Okay. Can I please get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Do we have any oral communication?
No oral communication.
Great, thank you. Item six, bond program consent items. Can I please get a motion to approve?
Summed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you guys. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Will.
Item seven, discussion item 7.1, data update.
So, we are going to begin this evening with a lot of information which you have all received previously. And Liz Wolfe, Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services and her team are going to present you with some information. And also this evening, if it's fine with with board members, if those that are presenting, and I know Liz is here in person, it's okay, she, you know, does not use her mask, so it's a lot easier for her while she's presenting.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
We don't want 100.
So, we are so excited to present this information to you tonight. And I want to thank Jenny Tran, who is here as one of our panelists, who put all this information together, or 90% of it. And I believe Kendall Klein is going to be joining us to talk about a component of our slides as well. And so I'll thank her when she gets here. And I know that all, many of our principals are here online listening. And so I want to thank them for being here as well. So we have a marathon of data to show you. And what we have talked about doing to present this data is to give you, this is all district data, not school data, to give you this kind of high-level look at a number of our sources of data. And then to give you an opportunity to ask some questions about the district data or kind of, you know, how, how we're using it. And then we can also talk about that at the end of our presentation tonight as well. But we were thinking that it would be important for you to see all of this data, although it's probably too much, and we could do it differently next time. So that as you start to hear the site reports, which begin next week, you can have in mind some maybe particular questions that you would like to ask the school sites. And so, and that's another reason that the principals are here today, to hear what in particular they should be focusing on as they present their site reports to you beginning next week. And then you can also send those questions to us ahead of time, and then we can make sure that we forward them to the principal so that they're prepared to answer. Because what we are, what we know is that we've got this large data that we're going to show you. But what your interest is, is not only what are we doing as a district to address the data, but what are the school sites in particular doing? And so they're better prepared to answer those questions for you. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And then I'm going to be saying a couple of things at the very beginning, and then I'm turning over 100 slides to Jenny. So let me get this up here. Nope. There you go. All right. So I want to start with just a quick overview of the kinds of data that you're going to be taking a look at tonight. And we've become quite enamored of the book Street Data as it defines different ways of looking at data and different kinds of data and what the uses of that data are. And so we'll be looking at the satellite data, which is that high-level data, which will be the California Dashboard, which gives us information, but it doesn't get to the point of being really actionable. But it gives us that overview from that high level. So we'll be taking a look at that. We'll also be looking at the map data, which gives us more particular information based on our own local assessments and is more useful to us as we think about planning, particularly around our instruction and moving forward with our support of our sites and our, and our staff. But what we're really looking forward to getting more deeply into is what they call the street data, which is really having the conversations with the students, with the teachers. What do they need to learn? What are their conditions that need to be improved? And this would be the kind of information that you'll be able to get also directly from the school sites when you talk with each of the principals. So this is based on a book that we've read and that we're happy to get. I know that one of our trustees here is a lending library and it has offered to lend it out to, to the board members. But we'd be happy to provide that for you as well. This, we're not going to show this video, but this is a brief clip. And I'm going to make sure that this information is available to any of the people who are here seeing this tonight. If you're not able to access some of this easily through the board agenda document, just send me an email and I can send this out to you. But this video also gives a nice overview of the street data philosophy. The authors of the book are discussing their philosophies around the use of data in conversation with a couple of experts on data and data analysis. And so again, we're not going to look at that, but that's, it gives a nice view if you don't want to read the whole book. Yikes. I just turned it on.
Can I just say, Liz, that I thought it was an excellent video?
Oh, good.
Yeah, I really appreciate you putting it in there. And it is an hour long, so obviously we're not going to look at it here, but,
Yeah.
but it is worth it if people didn't have a chance to look at it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Let's see here. Okay, so as mentioned earlier, we've got these three levels of street data. And so I've said that, so I'll just go ahead to the next one. So we'll start off with the satellite data, which is that large grain size. And again, it's used primarily for accountability and looking at the system that we're working in and where our system is being successful and where our, our system needs work in order to better reach all of our students. So it's pointing us in that direction. And again, there's a lot of information about the dashboard, and I'm going to turn this over to Jenny. And Jenny, why don't you, is Jenny able to, to speak?
I think I can.
Okay, yes, thank you, Jenny. So I'm going to turn off my microphone and then Jenny, just say next every time you want me to advance the slide. And thank you again for being here tonight.
You're welcome. Hi, everyone. So my name is Jenny Tran. I'm the coordinator of data analysis and accountability for school district. So today I'm going to start with the California School Dashboard. It has been a couple of years that we have not visited this type of data. So I kind of want to start off with providing you with some basic information. Also, as a refresh for those who already know about a dashboard, just that we understand what is the school dashboard is about. All right, so California recognized that there are many different elements that are critical for the healthy and happy learning and growing of our student. So the state considers the factor in the eight state priority for school, including basic services, implementation of state standards, parental involvement, people achievement, people engagement, school climate, course success, and then other people outcomes, including broader course of study. Next. How are these priority measured? There are 11 indicator in place to measure the performance of these priorities. There are six state indicator and five local indicators. For us at the elementary school district, we only have four state indicators because we don't have college and career and graduation rate. So we only have the academic for English language acquisition and math, English learner progress, chronic absenteeism and suspension rate. For local indicator, we have the, the basic condition of the school setting, implementation of academic standards, parent, parent engagement, school climate and access to broad car course of study. Next slide. Next, Liz.
So I'm sorry.
Oh, no, just go back. Yes. Okay, so, um, the California School Dashboard is designed to report on many of those indicator for the community and for federal and state accountability. The dashboard is released annually each fall. So for each of these state indicator, there are five status level ranging from very high to very low. And then five change level going from increase significantly to decline significantly. The combination of these status and change in level result in the performance level or color on the color of 5x5 color chart right here for the district. So that is what the original dashboard is about. However, for this year, this is not what happening. Next. For 2022 school dashboard, we called it the limited purple edition because this only apply for this year. Due to the restriction that embossed by the Assembly Bill 130, California is required to report on current data only for the 2022 dashboard. Therefore, the 2022 dashboard will not display the differences compared to prior year. Only the status is displayed, what we, and it is displayed as what we call the cellphone bar, going from very low to very high, and the whole dashboard only will only have one color, which is purple. Next. So which are the student group that are included on the dashboard? They include all our students, the student by ethnicity group, African-American, American Indian, Asian, Filipino, Hispanic, Pacific Islander, white or two or more races. And then also the student in some special specific programs such as English learner, student with disability, social economically disadvantaged, homeless and foster youth. Next. Before we dive into the dashboard data, I want to provide you some information about what we call N-size threshold. So the student group on the dashboard are only being reported if there are 30 or more students. With the exception that foster youth and homeless, there has to be at least 15 or more students at the district level to be reported on the dashboard. For example, if the district have 20 foster students, then their result will be reported at the district level, but not at the school level. For a student group between 11 to 29 students, their result will be displayed, but they will not be assigned a status level. So for example, if our district have 20 foster students, for example, the suspension rate where we report it, you will see the rate, but they will not be assigned a status whether it's a low or high level. And then the student group with 10 or less will have no information display to protect the confidentiality of the student. Next. So this is the landing page. If you are to look at the California School Dashboard, it has our district demographic information. And a note that this information, the count and the percentage is as of census day or some people known it as a C-Bet day, which is the first Wednesday of October. Next. This is the overall of how Redwood City School District is doing for 2122 school year. The measurement that passed the cellphone bar are state measure. The measurement with the standard met or not met, those are local measure. Okay, next. So I will go over the state measure here. The first one is the academic performance for English or language art. This measure how well the student are meeting the grade level standard based on their performance in EOA portion of the CAS and the CAA test that were taken during spring for student grade three to eight. The left side graphic show you the district performance, which is, we have 14.7 points below standard. And that score, with that score, we are assigned a low status. Compared to the state, which is the graphic on the right, that has 12.2 points below standard, which is also a low status. Next slide. This is the English Language Art Performance Breakdown by Student Group. You can see the most of our student group end up in the very low and low performance status. Also a note that the foster youth there is saying no performance level because they do not meet the, the inside threshold requirement, which is 15, 15 student or more. We have about, I would say 13 foster youth. Next. It's in the same academic performance. This one measure how our student are performing based on the performance in math that taken again during spring CAS and CAA administration. At the district, we have 40.2 points below standard. That give us a low status compared to the state, 51.7 points below standard, also a low status. Next slide. This is the overall performance for math broken down by student group level also. So again, most of our students end up in the very low or low status group. The next indicator is called the English learner progress or ELP. The ELP measure look at the progress that an English learner student are making toward achieving English proficiency by taking the, the English proficiency test, or we call LPAC. And it is administered in the spring every year. The results from two years of LPAC score are used to calculate the English learner progress. Because of the two years data requirement, only the student in grade one through eight are included in this measure. At the district, we have 55.7% of our ELP student who are making progress toward their English proficiency, which, which translate into a status of high performance. However, the district is, this year is automatically assigned a low status for this indicator due to not meeting the 95% participation rate. We got 94% on our participation rate for 2021 and 22 school year. Okay, next. Here, I want to give you a little explanation on what it means when a student is considered making progress toward English proficiency on the dashboard. When the student receive the LPAC score, there are four level, one through four. However, on the dashboard, for accountability purpose only, the LPAC level were divided into six LP level. So the level two and three is broken down to too low, too high, and then below two, below, below, be high. So for example, when the student took an LPAC test for two years and the score show that they go from a too low to a too high, even though it's still an LPAC level two, on the dashboard, the student is counted at making progress of one LP level. Next slide. This is the breakdown for the English learner progress. The purple and the blue part, which is, the purple is the student who progressed at least one LP level. And the blue is ELP student who maintain the LP level four. Those two color, purple and blue is what made up the 55.7% progress that we have on the dashboard. We have 31.8% of our student maintain the LP level between the two LPAC administration. We have 12.6% of our student increase at least one LP level between two LPAC administration. Next. The next indicator on the dashboard is chronic absenteeism. This measure show how many student was absent for at least 10% or more of the instructional day that they were enrolled in a school district. The chronic absenteeism calculation include only the student that were enrolled in the school for at least 31 or more day. For most of the state indicator, the design outcome is to have a high percentage performance in the current year. However, for the chronic absenteeism, the design outcome is reversed. The goal for the district is to achieve a low chronic absenteeism status. So for 22 school year, we have 27.4% of our student chronically absent. That lend us on a very high chronic absenteeism status. And compared to the state on the right is 30% chronically absent, also very high status. Next, please. So this is chronic absenteeism broken down by student group. Majority of our student group have a very high status for chronic absenteeism. Next slide. So the last state indicator is cost suspension rate. This measure the number of students suspended during any portion enroll in a school. A student is counted as suspended in the district suspension rate only once. Regardless whether we, they have multiple suspension, multiple days of suspension or multiple school of suspension. So when a student is suspended at multiple school, he or she is counted once at the district level and then once at each of the school. Similar to the chronic absenteeism, the, the desire outcome for the suspension rate is also reversed and the goal is to achieve a low suspension rate. We, we have 2.8% of our students suspended for at least one full day. That give us a status of medium compared to the state with a 3.1% suspended at least one day. Next. So this is the suspension rate broken down by student group. Most of our group end up in the high status level. Okay, next slide. So with the information that you have regarding how the student group are doing, I want to mention also about differentiate assistant or DA. The DA is the state accountability ability system that intended to support the school district in building their capacity to improve the student outcome. So using the dashboard information, the result from the student group data is being used to determine eligibility for differentiate assistant. To be eligible for assistant, the same student group must meet the criteria, criteria in two different priority area. So if you, you can see that there are 11 priority, 10 priority here. Let's say we have a student group that have really, really high chronic absenteeism, which is priority five. And then we have that same student group who have very high suspension rate, which is priority six. That group of student will meet the criteria for differentiate assistance. So that is in the normal year process, both state and local priority are being used to determine differentiate assistance. Next. However, for 2022, this year only, only the state priority, which is priority four, five and six are being used for differentiate assistant. So a, a group of, the student group must have a very low or very high status in a combination of priority four and five, or five and six, or four and six. With that guideline, next slide. We have determined that we have five student group in our district highlighted in red that are eligible for differentiate assistant for 2022. Okay, I think that's the end of the dashboard presentation. Does, do we open up for question?
So, yes. Thanks, Jenny. Thank you so much.
But red, I thought red meant turned off. Thank you, Jenny. Say it again. So we've had the chance to take a look at this data. And so I'm wondering if you have any additional questions that you would like to ask at this time? Or if there are questions, we can also talk, this, this would be more to, if you have questions about how it's calculated or the information that you've seen, because we can save conversations towards the end about some of our strategies and, and ways that we're dealing with this when we take a look at the other data pieces as well. If that, if you would prefer to do that, we can keep going on with the data, or if you've got some particular questions about the dashboard. Yeah? Okay. Thank you. So Jenny, we'll keep going.
Okay. So the next piece of data that we have is what this call is the, the local assessment that we have called I-ready. And the result that I am to show you is to include both the fall and winter data so it just give you an idea on our student progress through the two assessment. Next slide. So just a quick recap for everybody that I-ready assessment have five relative placement level going from three or more grade levels below, two grade levels below, one grade level below, and early on grade, and the last one, the highest level is mid or above grade level. This is the reading overall relative placement in fall, which is orange color and winter, which is blue color, grouped by their placement level. Overall, there is some steady decreases in below grade levels and increases on the, on and above level placement between fall and winter. Next. Within the mid or above grade level placement, the highest level, here is how our student are doing breakdown by grade level. I want to point out here that there were not that many kindergarten students taking the I-ready test for the fall. So the fall I-ready result for Kinder does not truly reflect the performance of this grade level. Therefore, they're not being used to compare to the winter performance level here, so we don't display the fall data there. Okay. Next slide. Is how each of grade level is doing for the early on grade placement. Overall, we can see that there is some little, but there are some change and some increase in this level placement between fall and winter. Next. Here is the one grade level below placement. We can see that a high percentage of our Kinder to second grade student are performing one grade level before, below the level. Next. Here is two grade levels below placement. Within this placement, I want to point out that kindergarten does not have two grade level below placement. So their group is not being reflected here. Okay, next. Here is the three or more grade level below placement. We can see that a high percentage of our upper grades, you know, six through eight fall into displacement level. Kindergarten and first grade do not have three grade levels below placement, so their grade level are not being reflected here. There is no second grader in our district that have three or more grade level below. So they're showing a zero percentage. Next. So now that you see how the makeup population for each of the placement level, here is how, our, the changes that we're seeing district Y, going from no change to went down in level or when, when up in level. So the gray color part is So the gray color part is reflect no change in level placement. The darker gray, which is forty two percent of our student who are be below the gray level have no change in their performance from wind from fall to winter. A lighter gray of twenty three percent reflect that's how many of our students who are on or above gray level but do not but did not have any change in their performance level. Um, overall, we have twenty six percent total of our student went up in their level and nine percent of our students went down in the level. Um, on the left corner, uh side, I also have the count of how many students uh broken down for you. Next. Um, here is how our how our English learner student are doing in fall was versus winter assessment. Uh, you can see majority of our English student uh English uh learner student are performing below the gray level. So the top um three levels right there for reading. Next. Here is the overall changes between fall and winter for our EL group. Seventy one percent of our ESL student who are below gray level did not uh have any change in their placement between fall and winter assessment. Um, about twenty one percent went up in level and then six percent went down in level. Next. Here is how our student with disability or SWD is doing. Um, you can see that about half of our students with disability are in the three or more gray level below for reading. Next. Um, here is the change in the placement for student with disability. Sixty nine percent did not have any change in their placement level. Fourteen percent went up in placement and then seven percent went down placement. Next. Most of our, this is for um economically disadvantaged group, most of our student in this group are below gray level placement. Next. Sixty five percent of our student in the economically disadvantaged group did not have any change in placement. Twenty five percent of them went up in level and then ten percent of them went down level. Um, here's how our homeless student group is doing. Um, they mostly are in the below gray level placement also. Next. Between fall and winter, seventy eight percent of our homeless students did not make any change in placement level. Seventeen percent went up in level and five percent went down level. Next. And this is the last of the student group. Uh, for the foster group, the percent of student in placement level did not change from the fall to the winter. You can see they are the same, even though um some student in the group have changed in their placement. But somehow the total number of the student in each placement is the same. So the per- percentage of the student in the uh the level stayed the same. Next. With that saying, we have about eleven um fosters uh student who took the test and two of them went down level. A of them have no change in their placement and two of the and one of them went up to level. Okay, so that is for reading. We're gonna find a very similar pan when it come to the math performance. Next. Um, again, a high percent of our student is in um the the one gray level below than that compared to other levels. Next. Um, here is the mid above gray level placement broken down by gray level. Overall, we see some increases between fall and winter. Next. Here is the um early on gray level placement. Next. Majority of our students are in one gray level below placement for math, as you can see here, especially for kindergarten. Next. Um, so uh this is the two gray levels below placement. And again, kindergarten do not have two gray level below, so their information are not reflected here. But um we have high percent of our our second graders fall into this group. Next. Um, Kinder and first grader again do not have the gray level replacement. Uh, we have no student in second grade with three or more gray level below. And we can see that major that there is a high percentage of our upper grade again, who are three or more uh below gray levels. Next. Here is the change uh overall for the district uh in term of the math performance. We have sixty four percent have no change in placement, twenty nine percent went up in level and seven percent went down in level. Next. Very similar to the reading result, the majority of our English learner students are below in gray level placement uh between fall and winter. Though you can see that uh if you look at the fall or winter, there is some good decrease in the the two or three gray level below, which is resulting a and and uh uh an an increase on the one gray level. So the student uh uh stepped from three to two gray level, three and two gray level below to the one gray level below between fall and winter. Next. It is the changes that uh half for our English learner group. We have sixty nine percent of our student did not have any change in the placement, twenty six percent went up in level and five percent went down level. Next. Um, also consistent with the reading performance, there are very high percentage of our student with disability um uh for under the three or more grade level below in the math placement. Next. So there are sixty nine percent of our student with disability did not have any change in their level. Twenty four percent went up and seven percent went down. Next. Um, this is the changes that happening for the economically disadvantaged group. Majority of our students in this group are performing be- below the gray levels. Next. Next. Oh. Did I just get sorry, just go back. Yes, sixty five percent of our student in the this group have no change. Twenty eight percent went up in level and seven percent went down level. Next. Um, homeless group. Um, almost all of our homeless students are below gray level in not placement. Next. Um, the sixty five percent with no change in placement, twenty four percent went up and eleven percent went down. Next. And lastly, all of our foster students are below gray levels. Um, next. And since there's only eleven students, um the makeup for it is that six percent of uh uh six students did not have any change in their gray level and then five of them went up in one level. Okay, that is the end of the IBD, already reading and math. Does anybody have any question?
So was the same, we'll talk about this later, right? Okay. She's gone Jenny.
I hi, sorry, I've been speaking. I'm so sorry. Hi, so um the next piece of data we're gonna look at is the district panorama panorama survey. Um, the panorama surveys are uh given twice a year now to uh different stakeholder in our district. Um, there are different part part to the panorama survey including grade three to fifth survey, grade six to eight survey, family survey and school staff survey, which include both teacher and non-classroom uh staff. Um, all surveys are anonymous, so what we get back is just the aggregated uh count uh for the answers uh for their survey. So before I um showing you the result, I just wanna make sure um everybody have uh uh understand of how of these uh survey response work. Each survey question has five answer choices, most of them, some have six, but majority of them have five. Um, the total percentage of the two most positive answer will be used to calculate percent favorable for each of the topic or the question. So for example, if the question is, how often are people disrespectful to others in your class? And the choices are almost never, once in a while, sometimes, frequently, almost always. Um, the first two answer, almost never and once in a while, are at the percentage from those two answer will be um uh combined and that will provide it us with the percentage for response favorably. Okay, so that's how you um the these percentages that I'm going to show you work. Next slide please. So for the student survey, we are split into two different survey for grade three to fifth and grade six to eight. Um, we have eighty two percent of our student participate in this survey and I also have the count for each gray level right there. Next. Um, so the student survey asked the student question about their social and emotional learning, um school climate and the the school satisfaction. This is the overall favorable response for grade three to fifth survey. And so you can see the percentage there right in the the second column. And then you can see the changes that compared to the previous administration, which is the last column. Uh, for grade three to fifth, there is not many changes from the last spring survey. Um, the result for the topics um are below for the school rigorous expectation and school climate are the two topics that are lower that are in the lower percentile compared to others nationally. The rest of it, um we are pretty uh on bar compared to other nationally. Next. For grade six to eight, um the result of most of our topic are in the lower percentile compared to others nationally. And you can see that the grade six to eight also have more topics compared to grade through to fifth because we also include some um question regarding um the drug and alcohol use. Okay, next. So this is the snapshot of the responses over time. Um, I just wanna uh a give a note on that the panorama survey were administered once every spring in the previous year. Uh, starting last year, two thousand twenty one, twenty two, we start to have the survey twice a year in fall and spring. So that's why when you look at this chart, um for every other year before last year, you only see spring data uh up until twenty one, twenty two, then you see the the fall and spring and then now fall. Um, so um that's also one thing is that there is a data point where it's a winter twenty twenty. That is actually uh that survey word administer in January two thousand twenty twenty. So it actually can be considered spring twenty twenty, but the panorama for some reason at a time, they just decided to name it winter. But I wanna note on everybody that is, we can consider a spring so that we can um have a consistent view of the data from spring to spring each year. Okay, uh for grade three to fifth, on a school belonging topics, um this measure how much the student feel that they're being a a value member to the school and the community. Um, our favorable percentage is kind of below the pre-pandemic year. So note that the spring, which is the winter twenty twenty here, um that is the January uh right before we went on um COVID lockdown. So you can see that the data point where um the data has changed um that that there's a dip or a there's a raise in the percentage. So uh we are for grade three to fifth now at sixty four percent compared to um other years. We went up a little bit, but it's still low compared to before the pre uh the pandemic. Grade three six six to eight, we are at thirty four percent favorable. Next. Um, for both of our student group, um the school climate measure the their perception of the overall social and learning climate of the school. Um, you can see that uh the suddenly in spring two thousand twenty one, everybody responds so positively because that is the semester or the trimester that we reopen the school for the student to come back um on campus after the pandemic. So um everybody give a really favorable response, but um slowly and steadily the response kind of uh went down and back to the pre-pandemic level. Next. On the school engagement topic, we can find the same pan on both student group. And so their response went up on spring twenty twenty one when they're back on campus and then it kind of went down a little bit. And uh luckily for this fall two thousand twenty two, the response picked up and uh give us a more high higher favorable response. Next. Um. Uh, for grade three to fifth, the school safety topic measure the perception on student physical and psychological safety at school. Um, for this topic, the grade three to fifth is around high fifty to low uh sixty percent. Uh, except for that one year that there's a sudden pick because everybody is back on campus after being home. Um, uh for grade six to eight in this topic, I would say that we're doing a little bit better than the pre-pandemic response. Again, of course, except for the spring twenty twenty one school year. Um, next. Um, there the exact finding also apply to school teacher relationship. Um, this measure how the social connection is between teacher, student within and beyond the school. So um for grade three to fifth, we got a pretty good um high favorable score of thirty four percent compared to grade six to eight, uh we have a a little lower, but um still good fifty one percent favorable response. Next. And uh the topic topic is measure uh of how student feel in that teacher is holding them uh uh with high expectation around their effort and understanding of their performance in class. Uh, overall, we have good response for our students. Um, steadily around seventy percent for grade three to fifth and then around sixty percent for grade six to eight. Next. So um um the observation that we have for the students survey is that our district Y percent variable have not changed much compared to the last ring in the majority of our topic. Um, the result from the district grade six through a student survey are below national benchmark in most of the topic. And then it does look like our six to eight grade student survey favorable score are lower than those of three to fifth grade student. However, I just want everybody to note that um the questions that being asked on the three to fifth grade survey is a little bit different that grade six to eight uh three to fifth is different from grade six six to eight. They have um the grade six three have a little more questions. So we um just a note on that, so we're not making like a direct comparison between these two group of uh gray level. Okay, next. Um, here is how our student responding in each of the student group compared to the district. So this is the um if you can look at the chart uh at the EL group, for example. Um, this is how you understand it. If the year for um the EL group has a plus two percent under school and teacher student relationship topic, meaning that their average of favorable score is two percent above the district average. So the district average there is seventy four percent, that mean the EL group respond with seventy six uh uh seventy six percent favorable. Uh, again, the same EL group has a negative nine on school safety topic, meaning that their average percent favorable score is nine percent lower than the district average. Um, so the district average is fifty nine percent, uh that would make the EL Uh, that would make the E L group would have fifty percent uh up uh their answer are favorable. Okay, next. Uh, this is how a student with disability group, those with a yes indicator. Um, this is how they respond to the topic compared to the district. Pretty on bar, except for school safety, which has about four percent below the district average. Okay, uh, this is how our student grade three to fifth in the homeless group are responding compared to the district. Most of it are um uh responding at the lower favorable score than uh the district. Next. This is how um student responded breaking down by grade level. Um, we can see that the fifth graders favorable respond are lower compared to the district. And of course, the lower grade level, um, third and fourth are a little bit above the school district average. Next. Um, this is how student responses are broken down by race ethnicity. Um, we can quickly see that African-American student respond and generally below the district favorable response. However, just a note that there's um only twenty-two student in the group. So um, as there's a small, small size, so a couple of individual respond uh will have a big effect on the the average for this room. Okay. Next. So that was great thing to fifth survey. For grade six to eight survey, um, the student, the E L student group percent favorable score are less than the district on average in most of the topic. Next. So this is how um our student with disability is responding to the topics compared to the district. Pretty on bar. Next. Um, for six to eight, uh homeless group student, their favorable percent favorable respond are quite below district respond in majority of the topic. Especially um in the diversity and inclusion topic. Next. Um, this is uh the sixth grade six through eight respond broken down by grade level. Um, sixth graders seem to have more positive respond compared to the two upper grade. Next. Here is also the breakdown for student grade six to eight respond by ethnicity. Um, we can quickly see that Pacific Islander and Korean has lower positive response in some of the topic compared to others. Um, however, if we note that the number of the student in these two groups are also um uh very small. So um, just one student, one individual student can make a a big difference on the the percentage of the response being reflected here. Um, next. So the next one is the family survey. Um, we were able to survey uh one thousand eight hundred and fifteen of the uh uh of our family. Um, the family survey provide the school with a general picture of uh a family attitude about several key topics. Next. Here is the overall response in our topic for family survey. Um, uh, in academic care and school safety, we went down in um the score a little bit about three point compared to the spring administration. Um, the family engagement topic, however, went down, uh went up in uh four percent compared to last initiation. Next. Here is the school safety respond through time. Um, this measure the family, family perception of the school safety. Um, it has been declining before the pandemic, you know, that winter twenty-twenty-one is the mark god pandemic. So it's been declining before that. Uh, it was picking up a little bit when we reopened the campus in spring twenty-twenty-one and then slowly declined since then. We are at now seventy-four percent favorable. Next. Um, the school climate topic, um, measure the family perception of the overall social and learning climate of the school. Um, it took a dip before the pandemic hit, which is it went from seventy-six percent down to seventy-one percent. But it has been picking up slowly and steadily um since uh fall of two thousand twenty-one until now. Next. Um, the cultural and awareness and action topic was the new topic that was added uh in starting in twenty-twenty-one school year. So that's why you can see that there's only uh it has been only administered for time. And we are currently at fifty-eight percent favorable. Next. This is a very interesting graph, um, family engagement. Um, this top, this measure the degree in which the family become involved with and interact with the school. Um, the 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 score for this topic suddenly drop in the January survey right before then pandemic, you know, that winter twenty-twenty-one. It go from forty-one percent down to thirty-five percent and then continued to drop sharply uh the year after. Um, but then slowly picked up the the in uh twenty-one, twenty-two and then um right now we're at twenty-two percent. Um, this does make sense due to the limited in-person contact and gathering at the school site that we have. Next. Um, so the last part of the panorama survey is on school teacher and staff. Um, the we were able to have about two hundred of our staff responses to this survey. Um, the the survey give the school and the district leader a tool to listen to and address the our staff professional, social and emotional need. Uh, next. Um, this is the overall response for classroom teacher. So the survey, there's two different survey for classroom teacher and non-classroom teacher. For classroom teacher, um, there is, there's not uh much changes from the last spring. Overall, we got positive um response from our teacher in all our topics. Next. This is for the non-classroom teacher. It looks like uh we getting um a lot uh better favorable response from our non-classroom staff um in all that topic compared to the last ring. Next. Um, okay, for the school climate survey, um, the percentage of favorable response was declining pre-pandemic level and then pick up after post-pandemic level. And we are back up to um, you know, sixty-nine percent for classroom teacher and sixty-five percent for non-classroom teacher. This is a good uh percentage. Next please. The same findings are also here on the perception of staff relationship with the school admin. Um, we went down a little bit after pandemic, but we it's it's been picking up. The people are responding possibly to um this topic. Next. Um, staff family relationships uh topic measure the perception of the family and the staff relationship with each other. Um, so uh, the classroom teacher uh response uh seems to be a steady. But for non-classroom teachers, um, it took a a a dip after the pandemic happened, but um it seems like uh to our staff, um, the their perception of the relationship has got better uh since uh, you know, last year's survey. And right now we're at sixty-five percent, still a little bit lower than pre-pandemic, but it's picking up slowly. Next, um, cultural awareness. This topic measure how well the school staff is learning about and discussing about issue of race and ethnicity and culture. This also is a new topic that added into the survey starting in twenty-one, twenty-two uh in twenty-twenty-one school year. So um, right now, we have fifty-two percent favorable for classroom teacher and thirty-nine percent for non-classroom teacher. I think that is the end of my presentation.
Jenny, thank you so much. Are there any particular questions about the displays of the panorama survey? Not so much maybe what how we're dealing with some of those things, but in terms of of the information that Jenny has presented.
Can I just ask um one question about the cultural awareness category? Do we know what questions are asked in that one? Cause I know there's like a a group of questions that fall under that. We can get those. Jenny, I don't know if you have them. I don't know if you're right there.
Yes, I only have them for the student survey uh on the slide. But yes, we can get the question for the staff survey for the cultural awareness.
Thank you.
Yeah.
For the family, teacher and staff surveys, because they're a small percentage of the overall base, um, do we have issues with selection bias and being able to uh interpret these results with statistical confidence?
Yes, so um, are you, are you asking about uh the the staff and is it a staff survey?
Uh, for i- i- it seems equally applicable to family, teachers and staff that only a small fraction of the overall base answered the survey. And when you get small fractions of a base who are answering a survey, the fraction that answers the base is not a random subset of the population. So uh, I'm just, I I I'd be worried about getting a a head fake in terms of who is filling it out. I had at least one principal on my school tours I've been doing tell me that they uh it basically ignore the results of the family survey um because of this issue that it's only a small fraction of the families that are filling out the survey. So it doesn't give a blanket view into how families are feeling about the school.
So um, the family survey, we were able to count as the one thousand eight hundred and fifteen responses. However, uh, I just want you to note that um one parent only do one survey for their multiple kid. So it's not, it's it's not one thousand eight hundred kids be of the parents being surveyed. So it could, the percentage of the family uh being surveyed probably higher. But because only one parent does the one survey for multiple kid, yeah.
Yeah, do we, do we have an estimate? Um, like, is this ballpark about a third of the families that have so at least one student in our schools filled that out? Um, do we have a ballpark estimate of like what completion rate we have?
Um, uh, it it's not something that panorama provided to us. But if you really want that number, we would have to gather the family's household and actually count.
I'm mainly looking for a straight ball estimate here. We've got a little bit over six thousand students who are in the districts. So I would guess there's ballpark about four thousand families representing those six thousand students like estimating here. Like, I don't need people to run SQL queries. Um, so so that that means that uh about about a third is basically, okay.
And Jenny. And oh, a six thousand student, but we only survey. Um, oh, this is the family survey. Yes, it is standard to order the student, yeah.
Okay.
But we do, we do have the information about the number of parents at each school site.
That's what I was gonna.
Yeah, so we do have that, right.
How many parents at each school site took it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, cause it may be that there are some schools where statistically, you've just got, you know, you've got higher groups and so it's more relevant. And hopefully that principle in lieu of using the panorama dat- data then is getting the data elsewhere. And maybe they have a community school, so they're doing a lot of, they're doing more that street data, you know, kind of response. Cause you know, it is a good point. You'd hope that, I know, I mean, we send it out in a lot of different ways. So I think we're getting to everybody. And my guess is, if anything, it's a little bit more on the negative side than the positive side. Because if you're feeling okay about the school, you may just not fill it out. But if you're really upset about something, you're probably gonna take the time to fill it out. You know what I mean? So that's in general how I've looked at it over the years. Um, but I I was surprised to see when we're comparing ourselves to other school districts with the climate survey, that we do seem a little lower than I remembering us being pre-pandemic. Because pre-pandemic, even when we had kind of lower percentages, we compare them with the national. And I always felt like we were right, Janet. Do you remember? Cause like, were we on the commit, like, some of us really dealt.
You were on the committee for the questions.
We were, we were. And so, you know, like, we might have a, you know, like a thirty-nine percent or a forty-three percent, which didn't seem that great. But then when you compare this nationwide, we actually were doing pretty well. So part of it is sort of where the kids are at developmentally or, you know, whatever it is. With that said, this time around, it felt to me like, or not it felt, what we saw was that we may be lower than some of the national data. And some of that might just be the fact that we'd have to look at, you know, this is national data and some states, their schools did go back in person sooner than California did. That's maybe what I'm seeing, but I don't, but we don't, I don't know if we know that. And I don't know if panorama is sharing that with us. Um, but anyway, the the good news is it did seem like we, as as you were saying, Jenny, we're starting to tick up. And so it's almost like we need to continue doing the work we're doing um and more. Um, and then kind of watch it for another couple of cycles, right? To see if we we get back to where we were pre-pandemic. Um, but I think your question is a good one, you know, in terms of do we have enough data to make it meaningful?
Um, my other just quick, quick point about the uh uh data slicing was that I felt like it was maybe somewhat oversliced in terms of the Asian ethnicities categories. Because you get some of these categories where there's like six, seven, eight students across like Chinese versus Japanese versus Korean. It might actually be more helpful in seeing how the overall Asian community is doing by aggregating those because we'll have more statistical resolving power with larger N. So just it, just that's a feedback on the data side, okay?
Jenny, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Had her little baby that she's gotta go take care of. So thank you, Jenny.
Yeah, actually, can I, so she's gonna go. Just one other thing I did wanna say is I really appreciate seeing the response by um student group on the climate survey, because that was actually very telling as well. And it's kind of the similar groups were not as happy with the different climate and school rigor and things. And then, you know, when you looked at the, when you looked at the satellite data and the map data, it kind of correlated. But it, but again, it tells you, it it helps us focus on what groups. We really, I mean, it's very clear, like the E Ls were saying, I mean, they had a a um, a worse response on school rigor as an example, which can tell you, you know what? Maybe our school rigor needs to be more rigorous when it comes to E Ls, right? That if if that's what they're telling us, that they don't feel like it's rigor and it's enough for them. And that's an important piece of information. So I just wanted to say, I really appreciated the um additional uh, you know, disaggregation of the data, so it can help us. And then, and again, it's just like so much, and particularly that satellite map, it's so big when you just look at the district that it is really important, you know, and I know this is happening, that we're looking at it school by school and then even classroom by classroom, because that's where, you know, teachers and principals can really start to make a difference with this data. Cause when we look at it so big, it's just so overwhelming. And of course, we're not where we wanna be with most groups. Um, again, it can help us prioritize, because it's very clear which are the groups we need to be really focusing on and helping, you know, get to where we want them to be. Um, anyway, you know, I just wanna say that that I I appreciate all the work that you put into this, Jenny. And I'm, and I'm glad to see all the principals online tonight. And we also have some of our teachers and others. So hopefully this data will continue to be used. And I guess we're gonna talk about that next in terms of sort of, you know, how how we're using this data. Yeah, okay. So thank you, Jenny.
Everyone, um, have a good night. You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, I'd like to invite Kendall, who was able to get here in like five minutes from her house.
Here.
Amazing. And Kendall, if you want to pick up your. Yeah.
Right. Good evening. Nice to see you all again. Um, I'm here to uh give an overview of something that we are um using as a classroom research cohort is the way I'm um phrasing it uh with some of our teachers in the district in terms of looking at other um math assessments that are uh very useful for teachers in um analysis and planning instruction to meet the needs of our students. So before the mini mirror, there was the mirror and there still is the mirror. Mira is the uh Sequoia Union um High School District um math assessment that they use to help um gain understanding of the students coming into high school to make balanced classrooms and to truly identify those who need support classes to be successful in algebra as a ninth grader. Um, and so after a few years of having success with that, um, Menlo Park started um collaborating with um Patrick Callahan's group and Sequoia to uh do some of this work. Patrick Callahan's group and Sequoia to do some of this work in the lower grades. And so we were invited to listen in and it perked my interest and Liz's. And so we got the blessing to go ahead and kind of reach out to teachers who would be interested in doing this as well. Next. So the first, first off, there's already a mini mirror. They are both separate and useful tools, but they're different. And so I ready is a great way to assess what grade level our students are operating in, in terms of MTSS structures, like our screeners and monitoring for growth and progress. It also provides my path lessons for our students that really target where the student is at with math instruction on an independent asynchronous model. And that has really shown to support our students who are two or three or more grade levels below. And again, it offers resources for teachers to do small group instruction and can provide a standards report. That is great. Mini mirror is more on an item analysis basis. And so we've done things like this in the past when I was in the classroom with Mars tasks where they, everyone gives it. We calibrate and score it. And so there's the time and the energy that the teachers put into it that slowly over time, we kind of lost with other things. But mini mirror is kind of a solution to that. And so Patrick Callahan's group annex, they calibrate, they score. And they provide a dashboard for analysis that then allows teachers to spend time on analyzing the student work and the ways of their thinking. And what also perked us was that this aligns with the Sequoia Union initiatives. And so we feed into them. And so any way that we can prepare our students is always great. Next. And so I have, it was advertised to all and we specifically targeted fifth and eighth grade. And would I love every math teacher to be doing this? Yes. But we have other initiatives and sites are, you know, doing a lot of other trainings and PDs on other goals for their sites. And so I was able to capture five fifth grade teachers and four eighth grade teachers that kind of run the span of the demographics in our districts. And so again, with teacher needs, some of the teachers are on the pilot committee. Some of the teachers are, I believe, bits of mentors or induction mentors. And so trying to provide a differentiated way for them to access participation. And so, sorry, I forgot my water. I'm already moving. And so level one is you just administer the assessment so we can get data from your students. Because that way we can capture a representative demographic or population. Level two is you, you know, you do the level below, plus then analyze the data. And so they administered it. I've been working with the people at NX to help me understand and process the data to then work with the teachers. And that should be coming up within the next month or so. With that data, planning through the reengagement, that's targeting their needs. And then the ultimate goal is then from their participation, their experiences to then present the findings to the larger math departments in general, to reflect on the assessment and how it's helpful and what data we are able to obtain to help us in our classroom. And of course, they are stipend for their time. And so these are slides from math annex, just to give you an overview. I'm going to go kind of fast because I know you had a lot of data talk. But the assessment philosophy really supports what we always aim to do in the classroom. Thank you so much. So mathematics is not just about getting right answers. That's our goal. But it's how are they getting there? And their thinking behind that to help us gauge our best way to support them in clearing up any misconceptions. And so it brings up the student voice, it validates the diverse ways of answering problems. And also it's collecting evidence. And so the way they respond is collected in the dashboard. So it's living there and you can go in and see it and you'll see examples of that coming up. So in terms of, you know, what Mars and other open ended assessments are, low floor to high ceiling. So we get access for most, if not all of our students, and then it levels up. So that it is, we're going to see the range of their abilities to access the problems. They're open ended. So there's answers, quantifiable answers, but also written responses and authentic situations. So it's giving them problems, but extending it to real world context where they're applying their knowledge into the problem. Yeah. So again, they, it's not comprehensive. It focuses on major math concepts. It also with Patrick Callahan, they have vetted experts. They look through the questions. They do bring teacher input when they, well, you can give teacher input on the creation of the questions as well and the mindset. And so you can also include questions on mindset into these assessments in addition to the mathematical questions. Next. You can skip this one, go to the next one. This is a way to kind of get a bird's eye view of the types of questions that are asked on the assessments. And so from third through eighth, well, ninth grade, but third through eighth grade for us is we have knowledge, application and communication. And those are the types of questions that are being asked. So knowledge is really like, do you know how to add fractions? What's the answer? But then the application is including those fraction concepts in a word problem. But then the communication is how are we, how are they explaining and justifying their answer? And out of the questions that are on there, and the number escapes me, but it's usually done in an average of 30 minutes to 45 minutes. Each grade level, like you see the spanning, let's say it's fractions, fractions is a progression that starts in third and works this way all the way through eighth. There's a fraction question that is in every grade level so that when they take it, you can then see how the span of our grades are doing in that, in the vertical alignment. And then you can see how their other questions are chunked in knowledge, application and communication. All right, next. That shouldn't be blank. Click again. Okay. I don't have my notes. Traditional math assessments. You know, it ranges from multiple choice and other math assessments by hand where they are writing. But some of the other ones that had been used in the past specifically by the high school were multiple choice. And so it's a percentage of incorrect, correct versus incorrect. And there's a pressure to like re, to reteach and fix the student thinking. Whereas math annex is really looking to the open ended questions and open response, not open ended, open response, excuse me. And also they categorize, once they do the analysis and the calibration, they then categorize the responses by certain ways of thinking. And so as a teacher, you're getting that presented to you so you can easily identify. Teachers often can get there on their own, but to have the data just categorized for you, just, you know, teacher's time is valuable. It helps speed that process up and then utilize and build upon student assets through reengagement. Next. Again, so it's really tapping into student mathematical thinking, not just the answer getting to help us better understand where their thinking is so that we can appropriately support them. And another highlight there, the way that the questions are developed is that it builds a district wide coherence via common experience and expectations of the students. And it's useful data and you'll see as it comes up. So after I submitted this, I talked with the rep and they're actually moving away from this graphical representation on the dashboard. But in the past, it's been this way where it categorizes it between knowledge, application and communication and the presents percentage of students and their level of proficiency within that category. Next. So this is just one sample question. I won't make you do the problem. This was their presentation for us. But here's an example of a problem. Everyone, take a deep breath. It's okay. The art teacher is buying new tables to go into the art room. Each table can seat four students. The art class has 33 students. How many art tables does the art teacher need to buy so that each student has a place to sit when they come to art class? So question, and then move to the next slide, please. So, you know, in a multiple choice or right versus wrong, what do you notice? What do you wonder? Right? 60% versus 40%. That is one data point. We can kind of talk about that satellite version. But if you go next, what annex does for us is it breaks down the answers and the percent that answered it that way. Next.
Keep going.
And so keep going, keep going. And so these are snapshots from the dashboard, but next to each of those answer responses, these are like the little verbal explanations of how they would have gotten there. So very helpful for new teachers. We often have teachers that are teaching different grade levels or new to teaching or in terms of speeding up our analysis process to see the thinking to then get to the root of it is very helpful. Next. So just a pause to reflect. So students don't have misconceptions, they have conceptions. And those conceptions make sense for them until they encounter something that no longer works. They are only misconceptions when we begin with the expectation that others need to come to our way of thinking or viewing the world. And so this is what they presented in there. And I just, it, the way that we see their thinking, they have concepts. They have knowledge is the application of that thinking to the overall problem. And so we want to validate that and honor that and then utilize that for our, in our favor. Next. Again, these are common ways of thinking. We can move along, but this is how they break them down in some of the categories, counting and comparison. And then some items like that one, sorry, now you can slow down.
Go back.
This one. So again, what was your numerical answer? But then there's the communication aspect. And so if you want to go to the next slide now. They use this framework to a rubric of sorts to analyze their written response. And so it's MCL modeling and mathematizing connection to the context and logic. And so just some examples are what math did they do and how did they set it up? The problem, is that visible? What are the quantities or units in the context? And why did they do the math they did? And how does it connect to the solution? So all those being incorporated. So those are the components. And then that should still have, I think, the picture of art table. But with a deficit mind approach, these students' answers would have all been categorized as incorrect, like we saw in that pie chart or the circle graph. So as a teacher, you wouldn't necessarily know why. And so with a test like this, that's online and submitted with an asset based approach, these students' answers are categorized by ways of thinking, which is something I've kind of already said, so that the teacher can take specific action to support it. And so we're trying to shift the narrative of the relationship with data. All right, next. So here's an example. So, and we can just fly through here, but here are all the different answers. Here is their common way of thinking or the most likely way they were thinking, their explanation and then the quality of their explanation using that rubric or that framework. And so there's more that go beyond this page, but that was just a snapshot. Go ahead. Next. Knowledge example. So just can you answer this question with numeric? And then break down percentages and then the ways they would have most likely gotten to that answer. Next. And then the application again. So I think something happened there. My apologies, but the answer, the way that percent who answered that way and the ways they got there. And so you can probably just skip through these because they're repetitive. They're through eighth grade to some examples. But in terms of next steps, and as you saw, the level of participation, we will be analyzing revisiting the dashboard, analyzing the data, big picture by fifth and eighth. And then with the asset based lens and with our level three participants and then using that data to then targetly create re engagement lessons and then find our, present our findings of the process to other teachers and departments to get their take. Because we have already, like I said, it does one version and it's super helpful. And this is kind of more of that PLC model with the data that has a common assessment where you can look at the items specifically. And I think that's it. All right. Thank you.
Level three and level four participants, what does that relate back to?
If you want to go back to this slide, that could help me. So level three, I think, was where they're coming to analyze their data. So there's some who, I forget what slide that was. Sorry, Liz.
Thank you.
We've had a lot of slides tonight.
Try to go fast, hopefully.
A 120 is, oh, nevermind, that's street dating.
So it's broke. Yeah. So like, and some people can join, like they might change their mind like, oh, I've done level two. I do want to do level three. We do have a handful that are going to already, you know, when they did their little application, said they want to go to level four. And so that way we'll be able to present what we found and the usefulness of the tool or whatever consensus they come to through this process.
Great. Thank you. I think this looks really exciting. I mean, like you said, because before you just get a right or a wrong answer and you have no idea, why did they get it wrong? Right? What was their thinking there? And then I also loved like even those that got it right, you know, again, they come to it at different ways. And that's helpful for the teacher too, because then you can just, you know, describe it in a few different ways. And maybe the kids will like say, oh, okay, you know, anyway, suit really helpful, right?
Realizing to do that, you know?
Right, right. Yeah, I think that's great.
Yeah, so often it's either right or wrong.
Right. And if it's wrong, they have no, you have no idea just, well, what does that mean? They don't completely understand anything or they, you know, anyway, so it's.
Yeah, so having access to the items is.
How intensive is the scoring of the degree of correctness and axes of correctness of these answers? Is it pretty labor intensive?
So the way it's explained to me, they have lots of scores and they calibrate and would turn around time from administration, you will get the data within two weeks. And so we had a smaller group. It wasn't district wide, like some, so, you know, but they said like two weeks. So whether that had to do with just the number of students we had versus a district, but I think that that's their goal, like the timeliness and getting it. But when you speak to teachers, when you talk about if you administer 125 math tests and you, you score those hand, you know, on your own, you're, you're not taking two weeks, but it's your labor intensive, which teachers still need to do and they will. But this one, as a district wide saves that time and then gets our teachers together to analyze the data.
I love the directionality of this. I'm just curious about like, i- if the goal is that for all of our mass students in all grades, we would have this degree of richness in being able to calibrate how the student came to know a thing and to what level. Does that imply this army of human scorers that is, you know, going through these things or?
But it's, it's through Callahan Consulting. So it's through them and NX and, you know, Patrick Callahan, he's common core. He's one of the writers. So they have created these questions with the same intent and rigor to highlight the mathematical practices. And so in terms of timing, we noticed the two weeks, I don't know the exact, maybe I'm not answering your question. I don't know. My.
It's okay. It's okay. I understand.
Yeah, yeah. And so we pay them.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, and you can get, you know, you can try it out and yeah. Try it out and see how it goes, right? And then decide if this is something you want to go district wide or not, right? Because this, right now, you're just doing it with the test teachers, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is actually, which is actually good to start small, I think, with something like this, right?
Yeah. And they're even considering it like a pilot too. This is their first year doing lower grades. So I don't think I mentioned that because it was high school and now they've kind of trickled down because they saw success with it at the high school level. And so we're along for the journey with, with them.
How many school sets are participating in this? Because I actually saw in some of the principal newsletters, they were mentioning the mirror testing.
Oh, okay. So mirror.
So that may be the high school.
Yeah. So the mini mirror is the K through seven or third through seven, and then the mirror, the big one.
That's the big one. Okay.
Yeah.
How many are participating in mini mirror? Because there was like.
So one, two, three. There's five teachers, but I think there's four different sites.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pressure's on. I'm visualizing it. But yeah, I think it's like four different sites.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And then my question would be, obviously, you know, this is a new way of testing. But with those teachers that just, if we want to say pilot this assessment, will they be at one point collaborating with other math teachers to see if they would be interested? Or is this something that we are going to be trying to, I don't want to say push, but I'm going to use the word right now.
That's what level four is for. So I think it's empowering our teachers to try it out, to see the data and then to be able to present it and share it with others. And then that's a conversation that can come after what we've heard from those who have done it. And so I don't have a final answer for you on that, but I think the first step is to have our teachers engage with it and then have them present it. And so that they can then relay that. So that's what that level four is for, the intent.
Great. Thank you.
Do, since we are paying them for the scoring, do we, do we have some rough idea of cost per pupil per year? So to get a rough sense of what it would cost if we did expand things?
It was five, five, five dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, all right. Thank you. That's very helpful.
And that could, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's popular. Yeah, definitely.
But also there are other districts who are using this as well, right? And so this was presented to us with our consortium, working with the Sequoia High School District who uses the Mira. And then so we are part of a collaboration with other districts. But each district is running it a little differently. And so this is working well for us. And I think one of the things that has been so great about this is that it gives us information. It kind of gets to this idea of street data because it gives us information about how the students are thinking.
It kind of gets to this idea of street data because it gives us information about how the students are thinking, right? And so there, we can use that information. We can have conversations with kids about how they're thinking. But we can also now get this analysis about how they're thinking based on on the work that they have done. So we're looking forward to seeing how we can use this and how we can possibly spread that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendall. Thanks for getting here so quickly. I don't know. I'm not sure how she did that.
Thanks, Ken. Kendall. Right. Kendall is always on on topic. I mean, she's been very helpful with our Stanford program and helping us with those statistics.
Yeah. Thank you, Kendall. So this last component here, um, we're not going to spend a lot of time looking at because once again, this it's videos and things that have recently been added. So I don't know that you've even had the time to see these yet because we had the opportunity to do some interviews like yesterday. Um, but one of the things that we know is that in order to really determine how we can make a difference in the learning experiences of students as well as in the classroom environment, as in what teachers need to be able to teach. To meet the needs of the kids is that we have to talk to them, right? And we have to talk to them and ask them. Um, and so that's the idea of empathy interviews and um, interviewing students, interviewing teachers and bringing them together. So we've started to do that and I'm in a variety of different settings. But um, it's something that we want to grow and expand because we really believe that that's the level of data that um, will make, help us make better decisions that really are, you know, more targeted to the needs of the kids. And this is also very much aligned with the NUA work, right, in the, in the um, elevating of student voice. So what you'll see here. And so I'm just going to go through this really quickly because I know we're kind of fatigued of looking at slides. But that is information from the book from street data. But I just want to show you, um. We had the opportunity to interview some students from um, Ms. Kabat's class in fourth grade at Henry Ford. And so when you have time um, to listen to the interviews about what have been their successes and what have been their difficulties, kids are so honest. Right? And so we get great data from from talking to students, but I want to um, move forward here to this next slide.
We don't have this deck. We have copy of data update report that does not incorporate.
Okay, so I will make sure that you get this as soon as we're done. I'll send, I'll email this to everybody. Um, but. What I just going to ask you to guess, when they talk about what are the changes that you think should happen? Now, they've just talked about their successes in schools and some of their challenges. And so they're thinking about that. What kind of changes do you think they're recommending should take place?
Oh, I see the food.
It's all about. It's about the food.
It's reset.
Yeah, right. Right. It's just adorable, right? Because they're kids and they're just talking about, well, you know, I'm getting a little tired of the hamburgers and um, but but then they do move into talking about having environments that are more inclusive for kids and friendship corners and things. And so when you keep at it, right, and keep asking questions, you can get the information that you need. And so with that, again, we're not going to. Okay, so you look forward to to listening to these. And and I want to thank Bronya Whip, who is the person who interviewed them. And then because there, you can't hear them very well, in in some cases, she also transcribed the their conversation.
This is Saunders class. This is Saunders class at Henry Ford.
Kabatja. Sandra Kabatja, uh huh. Yep. Okay, so that's it for our hundred and fifty-eight slides for each night.
So um, when we start the presentations uh, next week, when the school starts the presentation. Keep in mind, you know, of the district, the whole, but then you'll also see school data that's coming before you. And what they're doing neck for next steps after analyzing. So I think that is going to be when we have those conversations with our principals and um, whoever comes with them. They could bring staff members with them to the presentation. It will enlighten you to what is happening at the school sites and the rationale to why they are where they are at this point in time, but where they are going. So um, I'm looking forward to it. I can hardly wait. It's something we haven't done, what, three years now, right? Um, so it it it's going to be great. It's going to be great. So I just keep, I know this is the district data in your head or bring your, bring the laptop. I mean, just have it on a laptop and you can go back to it and compare it to, look at their data when they show it. And uh, we'll have a good conversation. And we hope um, next year that we can do these, you know, twice during the school year, you know, instead of just once. Um, but we're getting back into the, to the, to the momentum of where we were previously. You know, it's, I, we've missed them. I mean. We garnered a lot of good information. We had a lot of good laughs with the kids that came uh, with 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 the principals and the teachers. So uh, I think we're in for a treat starting next week.
Um, one of the things I was going to ask is um. I mentioned this to John earlier today, Liz, is that when we have the school presentations, could we also have the principals talk about the street data? I don't know if that was going to be a part of it, but like I love this slide, uh, one fifty-one that was in the slide deck that's on there. And it's ways to gather street data, you know, artifacts, stories, narratives, observations. And then, of course, in this book, there's other ideas of what you can do. And you know, I, we won't have time to go over all of that because that gets into a lot of detail. But if they could maybe talk about it, because they're going to be showing the satellite and the map data. But I think that other data is equally or even more important. And I would love to hear about, you know, how are they working with the community schools to get input from families and from students? Um, or what, you know, how are students? You know, I, we know at Clifford, they're doing a whole lot of work with NUA and Student Voice and all of that. And I'm familiar with what's going on at that school site, but I would love to hear from the other school sites. What are they doing around Student Voice as an example? Um, so hopefully we can add that to the, to the.
The template that was.
Yeah, yeah, because I think. Yeah, anyway, this is all just sort of come up recently. And I know that in the um, in the professional development day that you had. And it was focused on MTSS, but I would imagine some of this came up as well about the importance of kind of student voice and all of that. Great. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for putting all the data together. Um, I know Jenny's not on the call anymore. Uh, Kendall already left. And then Bronya, I'm looking forward to the interviews. Um, really, all all the work that went into this, I think, was uh, pretty impressive. It's actually really powerful to see the different levels of data, the dashboard data, together with the iReady data, together with the panorama data, even with the flaws that might be in any of them. Um, because you know, it's, it keeps you, it keeps me from being narrowly focused on. Hey, there's just an academic solution for this, right? Maybe there's just another solution for it. Um, it kind of seems like looking across the spectrum of it. Um, and I want to apologize to our our classroom teachers and our our staff. I appreciated seeing their survey information there. But I'm going to focus on the student data and the family data. Of course, they're they're very valuable, but that's where I like to spend my time tonight. Um, you know, it sort of seems like. You know, you know, it makes me wonder, coming out of the pandemic, how much of the pandemic are we still feeling today? I know we've invested so much in making sure that our students have the mental health supports, the the additional support that they need to be able to come back and be ready to learn and successful in school. Um, and I just, I wonder if as we dig down into the data. You know, is that going to be something that comes out as opposed to just like, oh, yeah, we need more reading intervention or or something along those lines? Um, and that kind of leads me to my first question. Has there been an opportunity to go in and sort of root cause? Do root cause analysis and what's sort of that plan for, you know, at least at the map data uh, and the satellite data, the dashboard and the iReady? Because on iReady, I mean, I think we all saw that like half the students are are below grade level and not progressing, or they've declined in both math and ELA. And so I just wasn't sure if 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 that process has started, how that's going to look, what's going to happen.
So thank you for asking that question because that is the MTSS work, right? And so as you know, we've been involved in the different um, venues that we've talked about MTSS. And this is now, we're getting really serious about implementing MTSS. And it's going to take some time. The um, after, I don't know if you had the opportunity to take a look at the information that I sent you about our January third PD day. But after our presentation, the school sites um, had conversations, individual conversations about. My my computer just died, um, about what are the um, the practices that are common across their school site for tier one instruction, for positive behavior, for emotional supports? And then bring that information back together um, ac- with the whole school um, conversation about what are we seeing that are school-wide um, strategies? And what we're seeing is that there's not a lot of commonality at this point, right? There are a lot of strategies that people are using, but they're not necessarily aligned. And so that's the work. We're going to be talking about this with the administrators tomorrow at our site admin meeting about how we can um, realign our work. Because I think it probably was aligned a few years ago, a little bit more so. And so if we've done different things and had different pandemics and things that have gotten in the way. But we need to bring things back together again and make some decisions based on data about what's what's working for the kids. Um, so there's a variety of ways that we're planning to have those conversations because site administrators are a group. But so are the classroom teachers, so are our MTSS TOSs, so our staff development team. How do we bring all of those people together to work on really establishing this tiered systems of support, really focusing on language arts and math? So that is the work that we're, we've been doing, but now we're going to be really focused in doing it.
Yeah, and this this next one might kind of jump the gun a little bit in terms of getting ahead of the analysis part. But like, yeah, what what is it that needs to be doing differently to be able to see a change? And it sounds like you're, you know, really invest in it as the.
Well, and I think too, because you were involved in the MTSS team last year, that was the process, that root cause analysis that we thought would more easily transfer it to the school size as they looked at their data, and it hasn't. And it's because they need more support. And so those will be things that we practice together as administrators. And then there, there with our staff development team and our MTSS TOSs team, so that more people have that experience and what that process is. So that 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 work can take place at the school site.
Cool. That's great. And then in panorama, which has been kind of flat since, I guess we're getting back to pre-pandemic, but it's still, all the results are kind of um, kind of flat there. It's it's another question of like, well, first of all, um, reading through some of the questions, like I could see how kids would get confused by this. And we even talked about this in the MTSS meetings before. Um, the example I will always use is the um, you know, uh, how connected are you to the adults in the school? Versus like, is there a caring adult that you can go to when you have a problem? I mean, those are two totally different questions. And they, I think the latter is one that is the signal we want to get, but you can't get that from panorama. So is that street data? Is that the kind of thing that we would use street data to go in and uncover like, what's really happening here? When we see that there's this connection, but we talk to our teachers and they're saying, man, I'm dealing with like forty kids that have a tight connection with um. Like, is that what street data would cover?
Yes. And as a matter of fact, I had a conversation with a couple of our staff development team who is working with one of our school sites in having those conversations of unpacking the panorama data and what they saw. And then they followed up with it with the kids. And um, what the kids said is that we didn't really understand the question. And and the choices that we were given didn't really answer, you know. Directly what it was that we wanted to say. And so they have started having conversations with the kids, right? And so and gathering that data. And so that definitely is something to talk to the sites about when they are meeting to talk about their site plans. Um, because that that direct asking questions of students in, you know, in a caring, nurturing environment, right? Not so that they feel like they're they're getting in trouble. Um, is how we're going to get more information. This is great information to have to compare us to the nation and all that kind of stuff. But in terms of really thinking about what do we need to do to make a difference, we need to go directly to the source.
Yeah.
Cool. Thanks. Um, I never thought we'd get through a hundred and fifty slides, but I thought relatively impressive we could do that. So again.
You know, panorama is interesting. It's, it's helpful and it's not. Um, and it's always been that way. And and it's, it's so limited because you pick the categories you want, but you can't pick the questions within there. They they ask all of them. Some of them make no sense. Um, but you are interested in that category. And that question alone might bring your category down or up, who knows, depending on how a person interprets it. And as a parent, I mean, I've been taking it for, when did I start doing it? Um, yeah, so what my oldest is in ninth grade now. I've been doing it, I think, the whole time that he was in our CSD. Um, and there are definitely questions where I get it as a parent. And I'm like, oh, I know that my answer is going to bring things down, but it's just because I haven't been on campus because we've been in a pandemic. So am I not engaged as a parent? No. But my answer to how often I'm on campus is never. Um, so it's, it's just interesting with with that information. Like you said, then you need to go to the source and find out what's really going on. And that's why our parent engagement scores were so low um, on the, on the most recent one, such a huge dip. Because they were asking questions like, how often do you meet with the teacher? And how often are you on campus? And never, never, never this year. So. Just interesting.
We actually, when we first, when I first saw the panorama survey, this was last fall, a year ago. Um, and Jenny had just gotten started. We were working with Roberto was in our team at that time. We went through all of the questions and we wrote them. And then we called up panorama and said, you know, this is what, this is how we'd like you to ask these questions. And they're like, we can't do that. They're nationally norms. They will, should have told us that before we spent all this time rewriting the questions. But we completely agree that those questions can be misinterpreted and not give us the information that we want. And so we have to find other ways to get that information. Yeah.
To wit, have, do we have a clear, crisp set of questions that would give us data that we're not currently being given that are framed in a way that is likely to be understandable by students? Like, it sounds like that work's already been done.
No.
Oh.
To give you the quick answer. So so that is the work that needs to be done. People are talking directly to students and elevating student voice in a variety of different ways. Mostly through um, their lessons. But in terms of asking them also about their opinions, about how they best learn, about how, you know, not necessarily trying to steer them away just from what they want to eat for lunch, but to, what is it that they need to thrive in school? I think we need to think about how to ask those questions. And I know that we can um, get a lot of support from our NUA team that has been doing that. But we also have a lot of our teachers and our our MTSS TOSs and staff development TOSs who have that kind of direct communication with kids a lot, right? Who could help inform that. So I think that that is a next step for us is to come up with some common questions that we could ask. Yeah. So.
Oh, you know, just real quick, because it's still a kind of on the panorama um, or climate survey. So, you know, I don't even, I mean, I don't know if it was, how many years ago was it when we, were you here originally? When we, we explored different options? Sorry, I'm sort of, but I remember it was with Naomi Hunter, maybe it was Shelley and I initially.
I think it was, yeah.
Because I think we looked at different, different systems that were out there to use. We decided that panorama was the best for a bunch of different reasons. So I don't know if we've recently looked at any other options because one thing would be, you know, I mean, we're, we've sort of invested in this and we've got year over year of data. And we may be that we just keep it because it it it's good enough for what we need. Um, but the question is, are there other sources out there that we could be looking at that might provide better data? Um, and that's, you know, that's not necessarily, necessarily, it's not necessarily a direction I'm giving you. I'm just curious, have you guys talked about that? Or do you know if there's other climate surveys out there to use?
So I'll bet there's a lot, but I know that panorama is used pretty consistently across our county.
Oh, well, then let's just, yeah.
Yeah, but we can still certainly search for better things in the meantime, but.
Yeah, well, I I do think it's also useful if other people in the county are using it too. So um. I mean, I think there's a lot of things we need to invest in, and I'm not sure that's where I would spend our time right now, sort of thinking about that. But I just. So anyway, we, you know, all along, we've known there's, there's sort of um, there's sort of good things about it and bad things about it. And overall, we felt like at least it gives it some data, right? Because before we were using that, we really had no idea.
We were just using the help of kids.
Right. Which was really only what, fifth and eighth grade?
Fifth and seventh.
Oh, fifth and seventh grade.
Given every year. It's every.
Every other year.
Yeah.
Every other year.
Yeah.
So with panorama in mind, um, you know, just like um, Janet, I answer the same thing. I haven't been to the school, right? So as a parent, you don't, you know, I haven't participated. Um, and then I also, as a classified employee, again, working for the high school district. Um, as a classified employee, there's a lot of questions for classified, like instructional associates or par professionals, but they don't apply to myself. And so I've talked to either some of my colleagues and they're like, well, I'm not even going to answer any of those questions. So again, when you look at, and I don't know, right, how we break it down to know out of six hundred employees, two hundred and fifty responded. But were there all your IAs and para-professionals, but maybe not office staff? So again, with the responses and the percentages, I've always, you know, wondered too, even. as, you know, as an employee myself, I'm like, okay, that does not pertain to me. And I wouldn't even know how to answer the question. I'm no longer a high school parent. And so when they tell you, what do you think the student feels, or I forget what, how the question is worded. I'm like, I have no idea. I could tell you what my eighth grader feels, but not, you know, high school. I don't know what they're thinking of right now. So. Yeah. So with that in mind, but I do want to say, um, thank you. That was definitely a lot of information. Um, I know we have a lot of, you know, improvements to do, but I do want to say also, I appreciate all the principals being here. And, and I, I don't know who's here because I haven't really paid attention at the attendee, but, or any teachers. Um, I, I know it's a lot of work, um, but I also do think that we just, you know, one day at a time and we just try our best and we'll get through it. So, thank you.
And, you know, I think we talked, we didn't specifically talk about it tonight, but I think it's just worth saying, we talked about it previously. Is that clearly the chronic absenteeism is so high that we need to get a handle on that and hopefully it's better this year. But as we know, if kids aren't at school, they're not learning. And so that's very reflective in our data. So I just want to make sure that we say that tonight, how important that is.
Can I, can I have one little thing about that? So we are attending some train, so as you know, I think, um, Everyday Labs is, um, an organization that we're working with that sends out those friendly nudges. Um, you know, Elisa hasn't been in school for 15 days, you know, did you know that, right? And so, you know, can you please, you know, we, we missed her, please send her. And so they also provide professional learning opportunities. And so we have, uh, contacted them, not very much money, once again, um, for a series of four, um, learning sessions and all of our MTSS TOSs who have some of the responsibility for attendance, follow-up at the school sites are attending those along with some of our office managers, along with our, some of our district office staff. And we're going to be developing kind of an incentive and, um, um, some additional outreach kinds of, um, opportunities to really try to target chronic absenteeism because it's not good. And our, our, our attendance data is not good. And so we really have to reach out and make, make some changes there.
So i- in, in the literature review I've been doing, uh, one approach that seems like it can move the needle with absenteeism is to have a teacher visit to the home. Um, th- this is a relatively proven intervention. I don't know, what is the degree to which we've used that intervention?
That's rare and particularly lately, right? In the past couple of years, I know that, um, Antonio, our director of student services often visits homes. So he would be the, has been the person who, when there's some pretty significant need, he'll go out and do a home visit. But I think it's, it's fairly rare at the school sites.
Okay. I- is this an intervention that we could consider, given the literature around the impact of a teacher visit in particular to a student's household?
So I think that's a conversation to have with the sites when they, when they come.
All right. I just wanted to surface that.
Hey, the one thing I'll point out about chronic absenteeism, and this is probably for you, Elisa, is that we're actually below the state, uh, which is at 30%. Um, and I think that this might be an opportunity to find out how is CSBA looking at it? Like, are there going to be state interventions for it? Because it's clearly not a local problem. And I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to absolve it, I don't want to absolve our district from having to take actions for our students and like focusing on it and trying to get that in. I think that's an important thing to do, but it's not limited just here. And I wonder if there's, if this is surfacing in, you know, when you're in your, in, uh, CSBA director meetings or anything along those lines, is it happening there? Cause there's definitely an opportunity to fund maybe teacher visits or something along those, whatever, there's the right intervention there. Um, just looking at the state dashboard data now, every single group is in, and in the state level is very high or high. Um, that's not true for our local ones, but we, we still, you know, but, but it's, so it's, it's a statewide problem. And, and I think that there's an opportunity to see if we can take advantage of something along there.
Well, and that's where it'll be interesting when you talk to the site administrators, you know, are there opportunities? Uh, well, we just had conferences, but, um, you know, when the teachers are reaching out to the families or the principals are reaching out to the families and whatever newsletters or the coffees they have or what have you, is to really stress the importance to the families of being at school, like being at school every day that we're open, right? How important it is. And, and remember, John, we, we did some huge campaigns, probably in Rindy, you would remember too.
Mark Lavine was here and Mark.
Yeah, like six, seven, eight years ago. Um, and we really improved our rates. Like we had been down to, I don't know, 92%, we got up to 60, 96%. Um, so we only had a 4% absentee rate, chronic absentee rate. And so now when I look at this, I'm just like, I mean, it's, it is shocking how bad it is. And so the other thing I was thinking is, you know, um, we had gotten some donations from some companies of prizes and you know, maybe even just some fun things like that. If we could get some donations from some of our partners and we could have some raffles at school sites and things like that for kids that come to school. I mean, there may be some, you know, and again, it seemed to work for our district. I mean, I'm not saying, I'm sure the literature doesn't say, I think the teacher visits would be a way, but then you, you need to pay the teachers. Like there's a stipend involved with that. And, um, anyway, I, I don't know, I, I just, but I do feel like when I look at the data to me, that's just, it's such a big red flag. Because if the kids aren't here, then we're not teaching them.
Right. And I think if you look at, you know, if you look at the principal's newsletter, she will note, see in the newsletter each week how important it is to come to school, you know, come to school, you know, if you have sniffles, come to school. But you have a fever, you should stay home. But, and you have COVID, you should stay home. But otherwise, you know, you should be at school. And so it's all of their newsletters and it takes, you know, several sentences in their paragraphs, from paragraphs. And they're constantly leaving it in every week. So, um, whatever we can do. The, the other thing that really hurt us was, um, dur- during the pandemic, of course, you stay home, stay home. If you're not feeling well, stay home, don't come to school. So we're, I, we're, you know, working with Jorge, well, yes, if you're sick, stay home, but if you're not, if you're just feeling a little, you know, you have no fever, come to school. But you remember, but remember it was the, the notices that we were sending out for the last couple of years? Yeah, it was like stay at home. And I think there's a mindset right now with.
That's, that's what I was going to say is we actually spent, you know, the better part of the last few years telling people stay home. So I'm not surprised our absentee rate is up. It's, it's very high. Um, but I think, I mean, probably a chunk of that too, is people staying home because they're sick. Um, and we know that COVID is still going around and the kids are still getting sick too. So.
So one, one question I have here is that the, the data that we reviewed before this California state dashboard was backward looking and ended about six months ago. And so we've had now half of this school year and I would love to know, like, how are we trending on this school year? You know, uh, uh, are things going up and like, do we have a forecast, given that we have now half a school year behind us? It's like, how would we guess things are going to land for the next year's, uh, California school dashboard, right? Cause we have some data on that. So.
Is that something principals can bring to us when they?
That would be great. High principals on the call. Yeah, that would be awesome.
And Jenny can help with that too.
Yeah. So do, do we have, uh, predicted predictions around how the next dashboard is going to look, given that we're halfway through this year or?
No, so one of the things complicates that as well is that next year, the dashboard will also take into consideration growth.
Yes.
Right? And so where if it were just pure status each time, it'd be easier to predict. But if we grow, you know, then that will have an impact on what our scores will be and all that kind of stuff. And so I don't know if they've established the cut points for the growth sections yet, you know, for the colors. So all of that, there's actually a meeting with the county office tomorrow. And so maybe we'll hear a little bit more about that, but probably not. Um, because the state is probably taking some time to figure that out. But when we have that information, I can certainly share that. But we can look at predictive information in terms of just like straight status. But what that's going to look like on the dashboard would be potentially different.
That's fair. I'm just thinking like, there, there's a couple of these areas, like chronic absenteeism that we know are super important priority areas. We know we have measured in the past very poorly. And so it'd be good to track, how are we doing on those things and see if we can be moving the, the needle up into the right on those.
So just for clarification, as, 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 you know, you guys were talking and talking about absenteeism. For example, my son has been sick and so I actually got the letter and I was like, here, the board member got the letter, but he's been sick. Not COVID, but you know, like stomach ache and a headache. And so he just stayed home. Um, one of the other things though, or, or my clarification on this is when we're talking about, we for a long time said, keep your kids at home. So, but nothing really has gone out to say, unless you have had a fever for the last 24 hours, but like right now, the flu, I mean, the, the, yes, the flu is kind of going around, right? Um, I mean, do we want the kids with sniffles at school? You know what I mean? And so I just wanted for clarification, because I was like, am I understanding, should kids go to school with a runny nose if it's not COVID? Cause then if that's the case, then maybe we do want to notify the parents that unless your kid had a fever or they're throwing up, please bring them to school. You know what I mean? So I, again, I just wanted clarification since we're talking, I just want to make sure that.
So let me look into that and see what, uh, the county health department is indicating. I'm kind of thinking already what they're doing is stay at home, stay at home, but let me have that checked out and I'll ask Katrina to check that out for me.
I think also with the emergency mandate being lifted on February 28th, I think we're in this nice moment to sort of transition. And I think guidance from the county will be really helpful because we, we're very close to that runway right now. So we can start working on our PR messaging for that.
Yeah.
Right. And that's actually something I'm sure other school districts are wondering about too. And it would be really great just to have some direction from our county, right? And what we ought to be doing. So that's, that would be helpful.
Put on the, I'll put on the agenda.
And then the other thing, um, I kind of wrote myself a note and I didn't really want to ask this question while we were talking about the iReady information that Jenny just gave us. But one of the things that I, I'm just curious if we know that, um, in some cases, a percentage had increased during the winter for like the iReady, right? So now maybe do we know, or we have a correlation where like chronic absenteeism has actually, um.
Diminished?
Yes. And so, or, or maybe affected that, because then in the winter, maybe more kids got sick and that's why they didn't go to school. Therefore, they didn't do well in the iRe- I mean, I don't know. I was just, again, it's just.
So we haven't done that level of analysis, but we could, right? So we can look at the students' iReady score and compare it to their absenteeism rate or their attendance rate. We haven't done that yet. Right now, what you saw was just, you know, total student and by student group. Um, but in our edu climber, um, we, in our data management system, we can put those two pieces of information together. So we can look at that.
And then before I forget, when, um, you were speaking about, you know, speaking to the principals and then talking to the teachers. And of course, this is later down the line. When, let's just say this is all figured out and the teachers, um, know what level their student is in. Are we as a district going to communicate that information to the parents before sending the iReady scores or before the parents meet for conferences? Cause I'm just wondering if there are times when if the parent doesn't ask the correct questions and they go to the conference and they still say, oh, your kid is doing great. Well, they're doing great. They're getting good grades, maybe doing their work, but when it comes to the assessments, they're not. I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying it's, it's been a long time, but I know with my older son, um, he was behind. And there were times when the teachers said, he's fine. And so I'm thinking, okay, he was, and, but he wasn't, right? And so if the questions aren't asked, if the, if the teacher is really not being clear that the student is behind, then again, they're just going to continue to fall behind. So I'm just curious if, what kind of communication we're going to have with the families so that the family can help the student succeed.
So I think that depends on the site and the, um, communication practices that they have with their parents. Some may rely, and that would be a good question to ask when they're here. Some may rely just on, uh, report cards to be sent home with information. Some may do more regular, um, communications, particularly if there's some concerns. But, um, I don't know. I can't say that we have a consistent practice across the district right now for that. Other than the report cards.
And then a conferences and then a conference, what is, what is given at that time. But if, if we want to look at it differently and how we're starting, this is just a conversation that we're starting to have. We have not, you know, really teased everything out, but instead of has, having those conferences, you know, in November, you know, we're talking, start, start talking about maybe not doing it in that fashion, but going to October and you, instead of a conference, it's goal setting with the parents. And that's when you would find out.
Yeah.
Where your child is.
Yeah.
The specifics, but we haven't teased all that out yet. If, if, if we're, you know, when that'll start or, and also, you know, negotiating that at this point in time with next year.
That might also be a good intersection point to encourage parents to have high levels of expectations for their kids. Cause another thing that's come out of the literature view is that as much as we're talking about, and we've, we've got some questions measuring parental involvement, uh, parental expectations have significantly higher impact on student achievement. And so finding ways to encourage parents to have a high level of academic expectation for their children, uh, would, would be great. And just finding ways to put that into, for instance, the goal setting in, in October would be great.
That for parents to really encourage and to definitely demonstrate model, you know, what, what does that look like for like, for you?
Yeah.
When you're in the classroom. Yeah.
Right. Because I mean, you know, when we start looking at the iReady data and when you see the students who are three level, three grade levels behind or two grade levels behind, that's very serious, right? Now, it's one thing if they're a newcomer to our system and I know that there's some group that's there. Um, but the bulk of them have been with us, right? For years. And so there needs to be very serious conversations with the student and the parent that this is not where we want you to be. We want to, we want to work with you to get you to grade level, right? And the issue becomes even more so when you start to see those seventh and eighth graders that are three and three grade levels behind, two grade levels behind, and you realize they're heading off to high school. It's going to be very hard for them to be successful in high school and to get through there and to be college and career ready, right? Um, so, yeah, I think that's a really important thing is, you know, kind of Cecilia, I think what you were saying is, is my guess is, you know, some, you, you want to play up the assets with, with students, obviously, and build confidence and, you know, make the family feel good. But we also need to have very serious conversations when we see the students that, that we know are not where they need to be and that we're concerned long-term. So it is a balancing act. Um, you know, and, and I don't know how much of it is that parents don't really appreciate, like what you said, Cecilia. And this is going back years ago and I'm hoping that, you know, we're doing more of having those serious conversations now. But that is a question maybe for the sites is, are we, you know, really pointing out the data in a way that they can appreciate where their kids at and how we need to work together to get them where they need to be, right? And I don't know, I mean, I'd be interested to hear from you, because, you know, is this, is, do you, do you think we're doing it? Or do you think this is the right direction or am I off target or?
There, there's, you are not off target and I, you know, what we need to do is we need, and we're, we've been, like I say, we, we're trying to tease this out right now, especially that conferences. Conferences we have right now are, are, we're looking at it really differently for the next school year. And when you talk about goal setting and your goal setting with the parent, this is where your child is. But to get them to hear, this is what we're going to have to do together to move forward. So, and then as David is pointing out, and the expectation is that you as a parent are going to have high expectations for your child. And you're going to definitely, you know, work with them, definitely converse and say, this is what the expectation is. I need to get you here. We're going to get you here, whatever here is. So that's a whole different mindset than what we've been doing previously. And, and so this is, like I said, we're, we're working on it and, and hopefully have it all ready to go. When we, when the teachers are coming back.
Yeah. Well, the goal setting is great, because the thing is, we, we don't want people to leave, leave that conversation and like, oh, you know, what can I do? It's more about, we want to work with you together. Like here, here's the goal, here's where we want to get you, here's how we're going to get you there, right? Working together. Yeah.
I just wanted to add, I think the real nice intent behind that is six weeks will have passed. And there's a really good opportunity to have given assessments, to have a really good sense and to lay out a plan earlier than what we're experiencing now, which tends to be summative in nature. And the report card is handed out. So one trimester has passed, not to say the teachers and the administrators haven't put in the conversations here and there, but it will create a much more formalized cohesive plan. So I think we're heading in a really good right direction and this will be favorable and wrapped up very soon, I might add. So it's good.
This is maybe a bit of a curve ball, but I mean, that's me. I'm sorry. You're stuck with me now. Um, I, I, I don't know that we have, uh, form factors of meetings today that are the teacher, the parent and the student becoming. the parent and the student coming together is like, hey, what do we want to get done? What are we all, all three of us coming together as a team, committing to go and and do for the year? And and to have some of that, the 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 motivation, the plan come from the student as as much it is from the from from the parent or even from the teacher. Like, how do you learn best when you've learned things and really enjoyed it? What has been true of that? What is? How can we support you in your learning journey and have it be uh a metacognitive activity that the the student takes responsibility for their learning with the support and love of their teacher and the support and love of their parents?
Yeah.
Do do do, because we have parent teacher conferences where it's like the 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 parent and the teacher talk about, how is Johnny doing? Right? And then obviously the teacher and the student have a lot of interaction and we don't have a lot of visibility into the parent uh student interactions because those happen at home. But like i- it's really, it's ultimately schooling is that that three-way team teaming. And and I don't know that we ever get all three together in a room for a conversation just occurred to me. I'm I'm not saying I have.
Some teachers do, but not all.
Not all, not all. And some teachers, when during this time when they have a conference, actually the student is there and the student is giving.
Student led.
It's student led.
Oh, that's interesting. Thanks. Yeah, no.
Yeah. So uh so uh, like I say, it's not at all schools, some schools, but I've I've been I've been in, I'm presently at a conference where I just observed and the student has led it. And the parent has asked all these questions, not only to the, not necessarily to the teacher, but to the student.
Well, that's cool.
It's another way, but we're going to start, like I say, with the goal setting. And I think going in that direction will really, you know, help us all.
Yeah, I mean, and I think that's good. I mean, again, I don't, I don't want to say I want to push the teachers, but obviously, you know, we're on this together and, you know, we we need their support definitely, but I I do think moving in that direction with goal settings, I think that that that's great.
Just want to add one more thing. Part of being a professional teacher and part of the CSTPs, which is California Standards for Teaching Profession, in which stu- teachers are evaluated and they learn through and and prioritize and earn proficiency in. One of those items is students taking accountability for their learning. And so in this goal-setting approach, it is truly just that. It's saying where, let's sit at the table and figure out where we are. When where do we need to go with more of a growth mindset approach rather than a punitive approach? Because there's a long runway of a school year ready to go. And knowing that the student has support and voice at the table is quite powerful. So I went into it assuming the student was going to be there, but I know Liz is going to work with her team, work out all the particulars. But I think that was, it's a real switch from that more summative, oh, that's too bad. These standards weren't met. Um, we know we need to move on situation. So I I'm really excited about it.
So Cecilia, one thing I was going to say is it's, so it is nine fifteen. Usually we take a break at nine, but I realized we don't. I don't know how much more we have to do, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
There is definitely the um, first reading, you know, we have the first reading discussion of the board policy and independent study, which I don't think is going to be that long. And then I think relatively the other items under action item should go quite quickly.
Okay.
But if you want to take a break.
I'm I'm fine. I just want to make sure if there's anybody who needs a break that we take one. Okay. It's just, I think it's just important at nine to sort of acknowledge that.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah. Great.
Thank you. Um, okay, so then if there's no more question regarding seven point one, um, we'll move forward with item seven point two, first reading and discussion of board policy sixty one fifty eight, independent study.
Hey, thank you. So over the course of many years, independent study as a board policy has been in existence, but it's looked different over time. And I think it was highlighted quite remarkably at the start of the pandemic. So you'll notice at the bottom of the board policy that it was revised in twenty twenty one with the big changes. We had about approximately a hundred and fifty students that participated in a much more robust, well-thought-out Cadillac version of independent study that we chose to go forward with in our district that also enforcement all of the particulars within the board policy and even more enhanced to support student learning during that critical year where hundred and fifty students chose not to come back for whatever their reasons were. Now for twenty two twenty three, this policy is coming to you because there's been a new version that is bridging the old, the old policy, the pandemic policy and where we are right now. And so it does include, as you can see in the board memo, particular pieces, especially regarding special ed students, specific courses, but also a very strategic plan on how to reengage students that may not be as successful in independent study as perhaps themselves or their parent had intended. That being said, we went from one fifty to two students. So I want you to know our N is very, very small. Um, and I don't, I would prefer not to speak about the success or unsuccessfulness of this program because there's just two students. However, it is important that we look at this board policy and and take another read of it because there are some changes as noted in the board memo. But I also think there's going to be another revision as we progress forward because we're not quite there yet. This was never supposed to replace a comprehensive in-person education, but it was supposed to support families that still wanted to opt in or opt out and be able to move back and forth somewhat quickly. And it also addresses the short-term independent study that we're used to from the past. So that's my comprehensive summary. Um, thank you again to the Board Policy Committee. We look through this with a fine-tooth comb and where we can, outside of ed code and laws, try to look at it and customize it for Redwood City. And I think we felt pretty comfortable with it. So I'm interested in any comments you might have about this policy.
I'm sure they have no comments.
Uh, it looks good. And Wendy just answered my question that I asked earlier about like, how many, are there students in it? Yeah. And are they affected by the change in the policy? And the answer is no, that they're probably not affected by it. And all this does is strengthen the communication for parents if the situation's not working out. So it looks good to me.
Thanks. Um, sharing the N was very helpful. So.
And then, of course, I don't, except for whatever I emailed you. And so you could just find that out.
Thank you.
Moving on to consent items, can I please get a motion to approve the consent items, including nine point one?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Action items nine point two, recommendation regarding approval of governing board's initial proposal for negotiations with the California School Employee Association, chapter five for twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three.
Well, it's that time again. So excited. We're going back to the table with CSEA. And so in front of you in nine point two is uh the district and board's proposal. Currently this year for twenty two twenty three, we open article six salary and benefits, but then we also open two other articles. So those that were chosen were calendar. Uh, we need to work on some timelines with adopting of the calendar and then reclassification to open up nor more opportunity for reclassification. So once again, a timeline concern. But um, this, the the contract for CSEA does end in June twenty twenty three. So we will then quickly open up a successor agreement, which will open up all articles of the contract for next school year. So this is a a s- a smaller version of what's to come for next year. And I'll bring you updates as we progress along.
Are there any questions?
Okay, hearing. So so may I add one more item? We begin at the table on February first and then we have three dates on the calendar for March. Just want to inform you.
Thank you. So if there are no questions, can I please get a motion to approve nine point two?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Item nine point three, recommendation regarding third reading and final approval of board by law ninety one hundred organization.
Well, this is the third time and I appreciate feedback. You know, this, the whole point of this is to get this right as best as we can. And I appreciate the attention to detail. So uh, we took various trustees input, of course, and pulled that together. I sent it out to you early uh for to look at a fi- another final revision. Appreciate um trustee Marquez's uh recent input to prior to the break. And so I believe this document captures everything that we are interested in, unless you find something else tonight and then we'll come back for a fourth.
I think uh you you had the feedback from the last time, so I just wanted to make sure that it looks good to you. Yeah, okay.
Can I please get a motion to approve nine point three?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Nine point four, recommendation regarding acceptance of California School Employees Association, chapter five, sunshine proposal for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three.
So traditionally, both proposals are brought at one board meeting, the district's proposal and CSEA's proposal. And so this uh board item reflects the attachment that was submitted from CSEA, once again, opening up article six and two other articles. And CSEA chose uh bargaining unit vacancies, which I appreciate in our efforts to recruit. And then also disciplinary action. So we will meet with them to discuss their proposals, assuming approval.
Is there any questions? Okay, hearing none. Can I please get a motion to approve item nine point four?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Nine point five, recommendation regarding approval of retirement notification incentive.
Over the past several years, we have requested board approval to offer a early retirement notification incentive, which means that we are requesting those employees who will be leaving us to venture out into their next chapters uh in retirement to notify us early so that we, when we're looking at staffing numbers for next year, we can take that into account if there would be potential reductions or if we need to have some movement that we're aware early on. By ed code, individuals are able to notify us by June thirtieth, but that is very late in the hiring season and my department is super motivated to close that gap. And so these types of offerings help our cause for the retirement. So I put data in here regarding the last few years. We're not talking about a large number, but it it does help us with planning purposes.
Is there some data about like what percentage of employees that retire notify early versus don't?
So we have approximately thirty or so retirements per year. But the numbers noted here are those that meet the deadline.
Right.
So we have, so for example, last year, what is that, twenty one? So the remainder happened up before June thirtieth or actually even into August, depending if they're classified.
And is there a target with this new incentive about what percentage would notify early? Just to see if like, we're proposing doing this to move a needle, doesn't move the needle.
Yes. Um, we did see increases after the pandemic. I think we all know that the pandemic is difficult for our staff and in in education in general. And so I would imagine it would probably go back to some lower numbers that we've experienced in the past, but I don't have a percentage that I am anticipating. I'm just meeting with uh staff right now, principals about their staffing plans and hearing anecdotal information about those that are looking at retirement. But I'd say probably if I had to put a number on it, twenty-five percent. This will go, assuming approval will go out tomorrow uh to employees to consider. And most people reflect after, during the winter break about this decision uh in order to take advantage of any potential incentive.
But I think what it does do is, um, I think your question is a good one. Doesn't move the needle. But I think without the incentive, most of the employees do not tell us in a timely manner. And so it even with these numbers, it allows you to then start to fill vacancies in a timely way, at least of these employees. And since we know our gap, well, our gap is actually getting better, according to Wendy. We got a little preview of that with our new system, which is great. But regardless, if if we're, if we're trying to find teachers in July, it's very different than finding them now. So but but I I know what your question is and I don't know that we have that data, but what I, what I can say is that prior to starting this, I mean, you can see the numbers have grown over time. As people, they sort of now expect it and they understand, oh, if I tell you now versus waiting to March, I can actually get some incentive and then it gives us a little more time. So anyway, I I think it's worth it, but I I know what you're saying is, you know, is there a way to get better data?
I I I don't think at these numbers, we we risk this, but there's a bathtub curve here where if the numbers are too large, we start encouraging some very highly qualified and you know, seasoned teachers to start retiring uh earlier than within we'd like, right? Because we want to keep great teachers who've been with our district with us. But I think at these numbers, it's fine.
Yeah, the incentive is not that large, you know, in terms of.
Yeah, this is fine.
If there are no more questions, um, can I please get a motion to approve item nine point five?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Item nine point six, recommendation regarding approval of personnel changes for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three.
So this mid-year request is uh reflected regarding our special ed department. We had a couple of unique situations pop up in which we have special ed students that are attending uh non-public schools outside of Redwood City, twenty minutes away or what have you. And with our current transportation, transportation system, our staff can't manage those types of schedules. Um, and then, you know, there there are specific um equipment involved and so forth for the students. And so our ask is for a point seven five FTE van driver that can accommodate the need for these unique scenarios. And then also in an effort to maintain appropriate minutes, instructional minutes for RSP students and 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 special ed students with assistance, our request is to have four six-hour employees, which is an equivalent of a three point two FTE added that can fill in for absences because we don't have a subpool for para educators. And so if somebody is out for five days or what have you, that really affects the special ed required minutes that are needed to be provided.
Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. Can I please get a motion to approve um item nine point six?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Nine point seven, recommendation regarding approval of local in inter-agency agreement to provide education and training to credential candidates.
So in another effort to bolster our special ed staff, I'm pleased that we have a special ed teacher who currently has a mild mod special ed credential who wants to enhance her credential by adding the mod severe credential, which is essentially like getting a whole new credential, some aspect. And so in doing so, we'll be entering into an internship, even though she's fully credentialed. And so that's what this agreement is for. So I appreciate that desire to really help with what the needs are in our district.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Nine point eight, recommendation regarding approval of update on plan expenditures for the effective educator grant.
And that is Ms. Wolf.
We weren't able to fill all the positions that we had originally intended to um sponsor with this grant and additional needs have arisen this year. And so we are bringing this information to you about making the shift in our funding um from a couple of different positions that we're closing into a couple of other different positions that we're opening.
If there is no question, can I please get a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Item ten, board.
Item ten, Board and Superintendent's Report. And you guys are welcome to start, whoever you want.
I'll go ahead and start. Um, so Janet, Wendy and I had a board policy committee this week, so you'll be seeing some additional policies coming up. We're having a lot of fun. Um, let's see, I also, in fact, I saw Wendy there yesterday. We were over at the Boys and Girls Club uh, doing the speech prep for the youth of the year. And uh, it's always great to get over there and see youth, and I think some of the rest of you are doing that as well. Um, and then, let's see, I also was able to attend the morning session of the professional development. And thank you so much. I thought that was really good. Some great guest speakers, uh, really focusing in an MTSS. And I love seeing the chat with, some of the teachers really got a lot out of it. So I'm hoping the afternoon went well as well. So thank you.
I only have the policy committee, so thanks for covering mine.
And logo committee, right?
Oh, that was before the break. We did have a good read time, yeah.
It's narrowing in, logo committee's narrowing in on a few options that'll then go out to the sites first before coming to the board um, at the, probably at the end of the school year. Um, and then right after that, I went to the Septar meeting and I got to hear the, sort of the tail end of Sam Dreis and speak. Um, he was, he's, he visited a lot of schools in San Mateo County, kind of around the Inclusive Schools Week. Um, and a lot of the Redwood City School District, so it was neat to hear him talk. And also, I got to meet Dr. Mulholland there, um, who I hadn't met yet. So that was really, that was nice. And to hear sort of a bit of her thoughts about how, um, she's our newest Director of Special Education. I say newish because obviously started this year. Um, and here's some of her thoughts about how, you know, how we're delivering special education, where things should change. That was neat. Otherwise holidays.
Uh, um, last week, I did my school tour with Roosevelt, which brings me to nine out of the twelve schools in the district. And the uh, the remaining three uh, are now calendared, and I should be able to knock out in the next ballpark week and a half. So I will have completed my first kind of tour, tour through, uh, meeting with the principals, touring the uh, different place. In terms of literature, currently reading through uh, visible learning. So, yep, yep, yep. So.
Great. Thank you. Um, thanks, everyone. I have nothing to report. After thinking.
Uh, myself's just been really great. I'm really grateful that Taft will be up and running tomorrow, working with the, you know, the down electricity, you know, um. Anna did a great job of making sure that, you know, she, she was out there, even though we put out the robocall, the text, the email um, regarding what took place yesterday and uh, stayed until ten o'clock. Because I was thinking it was going to come on at any time, just like Ken, like McKinley and uh, North Star came on right away. They came on about, in about forty-five minutes, forty-five minutes to, to fifty, yeah, but forty-five minutes they were on. So that's why we staggered their, their comeback times because of the traffic. And then if you saw in front of the Sequoia uh, district office, a big tree fell. And it fell on their sidewalk. It didn't hit the street, but it was on the, the grass area and the sidewalk. And then it was a huge tree. So um, we said, we're gonna, you know, stagger the timings of the two schools coming together. And so that worked out really, really well. And I was just hoping the same thing was going to happen for Taft, but then they said, uh-uh, we went, went on to the website where the power outage is, and it said, tonight at eleven. And I went, what? And so uh, we had maintenance check with our representative, and they said, no, it's going to be, it's not going to happen tonight. We give ourselves a five to a six-hour buffer of when it's going to come on again, but it's not coming on, they said, the rest of this day, which was yesterday. And they said, maybe tomorrow morning, but it'll be late morning. So we had told parents not to, school would not be opening today. Um, and then we reminded them again this morning, at six o'clock, when I got up and talked to Jorge, Jorge sent it out again. And uh, it came on like a sensual ten forty-two. But Anna was working with, uh, her staff was working from home, and she was working from home, but she did a professional development piece with her staff today, uh, virtually. So that was really good. So some time was really um, brought back in a manner of PD for the teachers. So we're up and running for tomorrow. Could hardly wait for the kids to come back. Either can the parents, I'm sure.
If there had been an extended outage, like, oh, it's looking like it might be a month until we get the power back on. Do we have contingency procedures for like placing a generator onsite or just?
Just to be perfectly honest, we do have a generator, but it's not a generator that's big enough to bring the whole school up. Um, it's for, and I don't know how many of you board members remember a few years ago when they were doing work around here and they cut the, the, the power out here at the district office. And they brought the semi-trailer generators in here to get this up and running. Uh, the city did, because it was a city project that was taking place. So we don't have that type of generator, but we have a generator that can definitely go into uh, one of our school sites and handle the kitchen and so forth and keep that all moving along. But that type of generator, we don't have. So that is something I have never even considered. But when Martin returns, it's a conversation that I think we're going to have to have along with the business office. What are we going to do in the future? Because we've never experienced anything like that. Normally, it, it goes out and it's back within thirty-five to forty minutes.
Yeah.
You know, but this was, was amazing.
So it sounds like we don't have a contingency plan. So, so if there was a major extended outage at a school site, we, we don't have a plan for what would happen for the schooling of those children.
That is correct. And I can tell you that there is no district that does because Superintendent McGee is getting us together to see what are we going to do if this happens in the future? Because La Honda Piscadero, they were out yesterday.
Yeah.
They were out yesterday, and I think on Monday, they had closed the school.
Four school districts right now that are closed. I was hearing on the news coming over here. But you know, I, I think it's a good point. I mean, it seems like if, if that was the case, and it was just one school, we could take that, those school kids, and we could move them to other school sites. That's what we could do. But if you had a big earthquake or something, I mean, that's a whole different thing. So probably with our emergency plan, we should.
But it's like, the contingency plan could be like, look, A, that's really unlikely to happen, but if it did happen, we would just go back to like COVID days and make it all remote schooling for as long as the campus was unsafe to inhabit.
Except for like, in her area, there couldn't, we couldn't do.
I live, I live around there. I had no power. So any students that live in that area that go to that school would not have power to have internet or access to electronics, unfortunately.
Yeah.
Yes. So we would have to go in a direction as probably Elisa alluded, alluded to is to, we could, you know, have teachers go to different teachers and students go to be at different classrooms at different school sites from the district. And we would probably even open up some of those classrooms that we have that are available at some of the schools that we're renting out and go back into their, go back in that direction. But we, there is no contingency plan, and I had never thought of anything like that. Earthquake, yes, we, we have that.
That's just the sort of question I'm going to ask if one of our schools goes down for two days, like what happens if it goes down for two weeks? But, okay.
So it's something, yes, we have to think about. And that's one of the things that I know Superintendent McGee is bringing to our next meeting. What are we going to do? You know, and how can the county office also help us? Yeah. So that was my comment, report. Otherwise, I, I have not attended any other outside meetings.
Nice, thank you. Um, then item eleven, correspondence.
Uh, the correspondence I've gotten this week has been around uh, North Star and asking for us to do um, some more thinking about what we can do there. So, and I did talk to Dr. Baker about that, so that'll circle back to us. But I don't know. I, and I think, you know, I think some of those are just coming to me.
Um, I know I got.
And people are getting them individually, I think. But anyway, just, that's the correspondence I'm getting right now.
Yeah. And then I did get an email from two parents that wanted to talk to me about our star.
Okay, yeah.
Um, any other business suggested items for future agendas?
No, just a reminder about Friday, the twentieth. We will begin at eleven-thirty in this room.
Thank you. Um, board meeting calendar, are there any changes to the board meeting calendar?
Actually, um, I'm sorry, real quick, back to just uh, suggested items for future agenda. Um, maybe as a result of the conversation we just had from the school reports, just at some point, um, maybe we could talk about the emergency plans. And, you know, I think particularly with climate change, we're going to see more of this sort of crazy weather where we are going to see more flooding, you know, more smoke days, more whatever. And so maybe we do need to update our emergency management plans, not just to deal with the things that we, you know, the earthquakes, the fires. Well, actually, a fire to school site, I'm talking about the smoke days, you know, where the fires are all around. So anyway, so anyway, but maybe at some point, it's, it's not an urgent need, but maybe we could have that as an agenda item and just circle back and you could let us know um, how those plans are being updated. That would be helpful, I think. Yeah. Thank you. Okay.
Regarding that meeting, I just want to know like, about how long, the length of the meeting, so I can schedule for it.
Uh, until four, and then you and I need to talk because I need to put a portion of it closed session.
Okay.
So for us, it's eleven-thirty to.
Or at the latest.
Okay. Great.
Yes.
Okay. And with that, it's nine forty-one. So somebody going to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
One last comment before we adjourn the meeting. I am so grateful for a board meeting where we spend the majority of our time talking about data and student achievement. This is the kind of board meeting that we should be having, and it makes me really happy that we had it. So yay to you and your staff, and yay for the agenda for the meeting. That's all.
Do you want to make the motion?
Oh, I would like to move for us to adjourn the meeting. In honor of data and business team, yes.
Um, I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
And all those in favor, aye.
Yeah, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.